To start.
There we go.
Good evening, everyone, and I would like to call to order the Independent School District, White Bear Lake Area Schools Independent School District 624. Before we get started, I would ask Dr. Kazmercheck, there's a new screen for live streaming and Dr. Kazmercheck was going to read the announcement to for the livestream, so I will turn it over to Dr. K before we move anymore on the agenda.
All right, thank you, Chair Mullen. We just want to mention that we have live captioning available and the link is there on the screen. There's a direct link available there as well. The ifd624.org/jan11meeting. We're going to leave this up for a few minutes, so if anybody is interested in jotting that down, they'll be able to do that. And then just note too that captioning is completed on our videos when we upload them, but that usually takes about a week. But so live captioning is available. The video ultimately gets uploaded with captioning as well, but that takes a little time. But this is a new service that we're pleased to announce. Back to you.
Thank you, Dr. Kazmercheck. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Allison, here. Mullen?
Here.
Newmaster?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Arcand?
Here.
Beloit?
Here.
Chapman?
Here.
Thank you very much. This month, just because the last couple of months, things have got a little crazy. As we do the Pledge of Allegiance, we're going to ask everyone to please stay muted and Dr. Kazmercheck has volunteered, graciously volunteered to stand and give the pledge allegiance for everybody, so you can put your hand over your heart and we can move through that process and would ask Dr. Kazmercheck to start the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Before us, we have an agenda and if I can get a motion to approve the agenda, we can start to move through that process.
So moved.
There's been a motion by Mr. Chapman. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Mrs. Thompson. With that, this will require a roll call vote. The clerk, please read the roll.
Allison, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. We also have before us a consent agenda. Those are our sundry items, our minutes, and the generosity of our community never cease to amaze me and I appreciate everything that they do. This month, they've been extra generous and want to thank them very much. With that, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Marge?
A motion by Dr. Newmaster. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Thompson. This also will require a roll call vote.
Allison, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster? Newmaster?
Where I went away. Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. This number six on the agenda is the reorganization of the board. Every year in January, as all of you know, that we hold elections and nominations for Chair, Vice Chair, Clerk, and Treasurer. This being the January meeting, I would now offer to open up nominations for Chair. Are there any nominations for Chair?
Mr. Chair, I nominate Don Mullen.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Are there any other nominations for Chair? Are there any other nominations for Chair? That being said, this will require a roll call vote. The clerk, please read the roll.
Allison, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. I will now open up nominations for Vice Chair.
Chair Mullen, I'd like to nominate Kim Chapman for Vice Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Arcand. Kim Chapman has been nominated for Vice Chair. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? This will require a roll call vote for Kim Chapman. Actually, let me back up. Mr. Chapman, do you accept the position of Vice Chair?
I do.
Thank you very much. This will require a roll call vote.
Allison, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. I will now open up nominations for the hardest job on the board, that of Clerk. Are there any nominations for Clerk?
Chair Mullen, I nominate Jessica Allison.
Thank you, Ms. Beloit. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Allison, do you accept Clerk's position?
I do.
Thank you very much. This will require a roll call.
Allison, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Thank you very much. I will now open up nominations for Treasurer. Are there any nominations for Treasurer?
I nominate. I nominate that Beloit.
Thank you very much, Ms. Thompson. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Ms. Beloit, do you accept the position of Treasurer?
Yes.
Thank you very much. This will require a roll call vote.
Allison, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
All right. Thank you all very much. I appreciate your nominations and acceptance of those positions. We will now move to our B in the agenda, which is the public forum. Ms. Vetti, is there any comments for public forum?
Yes, there is one public comment and I'll read it here from Jackie Busjager. Hello, my name is Jackie Busjager. I am a writer for the White Bear Club and will be covering White Bear School Board meetings for the newspaper for the next few months. I've worked as a writer at Press Publications since 2015 and am a 2011 grad of White Bear Schools. Previously, I have covered Forest Lake and Stillwater School Boards in addition to city government and community news. I wanted to introduce myself and thank the board for welcoming me. And that is.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Dr. Kazmercheck, is there anybody? I know that you are in the community room. Is there anybody else in the community room that would like to address the board for public forum?
Nope, there's no one here.
All right. Thank you very much. That will take us into our first informational item, C1, which is the overview of the Welcome to White Bear Lake Week and the update on the registration information for 2020, 2021, and 22. Ms. Vetti?
That is me again. Thank you, Chair Mullen and members of the board. Thank you for letting me give you an overview of the opportunity, opportunities that we have available throughout the district this month as we prepare for the 2021, I'm sorry, for, yes, 21, 21, 22 school year. We'll start at the high school level. I'm sorry, Steve, if you don't mind clicking through. There we go. And then one more, please. There. Okay. And so we'll start at the high school level. Last week, both North and South Campus hosted Virtual Information Parent Information Nights to help families learn about course selection opportunities and the registration process. And then moving on to the middle school level. At our middle school, the parent, virtual parent information nights are happening this week. Tomorrow night, Tuesday, will be Central's event and then on Thursday, Sunrise will take place. These events are meant for current fifth grade families and those middle school students who will be new to the district next fall. And then at the elementary level, each of our schools is hosting virtual tours and information sessions this week. Additional in-person kindergarten events will be scheduled later this spring, allowing our registered students the chance to meet their students and check out the schools. And so we're excited to welcome the class of 2034. The calendar just keeps going. I see, Ms. Beloit, you're shaking your head like I am. Where does the time go? And I'm sure that our kindergarten, incoming kindergarten families are feeling the same way. So of course, the families who are looking for virtual tours or additional information at any of our schools are certainly invited to contact the school directly as well. And then a listing of contact information for our schools can be found on the district website. And so I'm going to cover specifically some of the communication that we've had with our incoming kindergarten students, knowing that they're the largest group of incoming families in the district. So some of the things that we've done this year are continue to offer online enrollment, which is more streamlined for our families as they're coming in. Printed forms are also available upon request and available as PDFs on our website as well. We've offered printed elementary experiences bookmarks to guide families on skills that their children could be developing on their way to kindergarten next fall. We've offered printed elementary guides and then we've created highlights, video highlights of district programs. And that's not just at the elementary level. They've been created at the early childhood, elementary, middle school, and high school levels. And so we also strive to reach our families in the languages that they speak. We mailed our elementary experiences bookmarks in English and then again in Spanish and Mong to all incoming kindergarten families as well. We've provided Spanish and Mong information on the district website. Captions are available in Spanish for our enrollment video. And then we've added a home language question to our district census form so that we can better serve families in the language that they speak in the future. And one last element we've continued this year that I'm really excited about because it proved last year to be a really fun way to welcome districts into the, welcome families into the district is a Yurin welcome packet that each of our principals worked on getting out to families as they are officially enrolled in kindergarten. So students received an I'm a bear t-shirt and then they got a note from their principal as well. So once again, we're excited to welcome the class of 2034 this fall. So with K-12 covered, I'll quickly give an overview of our early childhood program as well. Where bears begin. Registration events are coming up. A preschool registration will open on February 23rd. Early childhood family education registration materials will be available later this spring. And then Screen at 3, which is a process to screen children at age three and that continues through kindergarten, but it's best to screen at three for families so that we can capture students early and get them the support that they need right away. That continues to be a calendar offering that families can sign up for. And the early childhood program has added additional slots onto the calendars as well, knowing that families are looking for that serve. And so with that, in closing, we're excited to finish off this school year strong and it's crazy, but really, really needed to be preparing for the fall of '21 as well. So that is it. A quick brief overview for you. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Vetti. Are there any questions for Ms. Vetti and Ms. Beloit?
Yeah, I was just wondering, how do we identify the incoming students, the three-year-olds that need to be screened?
Sure. Oh, the incoming three-year-olds for screening?
Yeah.
Our census form is sent out. So as families, the early childhood program or the census, we have somebody who works on census in the Community Services Office and they receive the birth records from the counties. And so it starts with a census form there, or it starts with the birth form. And that actually, if you're familiar with our one baby onesies, the Born to be a Bear onesies, when we get those birth records, families receive a onesie in the mail along with information about our early childhood programs and the birth through kindergarten programs that we have available. And so it starts there. As families move into the district, you know, obviously, the census form starts as early as birth, but then as families move in, a lot of the times what happens is that a family might enroll their child for kindergarten, or first grade or second grade. They fill out the census form and we find out that there are younger children in the household as well. So and the same is the case for our kindergarten, incoming kindergarten lists are compiled in that way as well. Something that our principals did this year and last year as well was to reach out to their current families and say, you know, we are, we're working on kindergarten registration. Do you have a kindergartner in your house? If so, let us know. We're guessing we have them in our system, but in case we don't, we'd love to welcome them as well. So we've tried to get creative in getting information in as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beloit. Are there other questions for Ms. Vetti? All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Vetti. Thank you for your work and giving us the update. We will now move into our next informational item, C2, which is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Kazmercheck?
All right. Thank you, Chair Mullen and members of the board. So as we come back from winter break and hop back into the bustle of January, I want to thank you for the flexibility you've shown so far this school year, although it's been a very different year from what we've ever witnessed. It will also be one not too soon forgotten. So here's the beginning of a new year 2021. The 2020 Annual Update information will arrive in mailboxes of all district households this week as an inclusion in the Bears Bulletin Flip Book portion of the Winter Community Services Catalog. The publication provides a snapshot of the district, including information regarding student achievement, school climate, student awards, innovation, finance, district profile, school board, district initiatives, and partnerships. Find an electronic version of the update on the district's website. As was shared just a bit ago by Ms. Vetti, registration events are being hosted at all levels right now, including early childhood, elementary, middle school, and high school. I want to take this opportunity to say welcome to our incoming families and congratulations to those planning to move on to sixth and ninth grades. Thank you to those who joined us last week for a virtual Coffee with Dr. K event. Community members submitted questions that cabinet members and I were able to answer. The Q&amp;A doc we created after the event, it can be found on the Coffee with Dr. K news post on the district website. Please mark your calendar for our next Coffee with Dr. K from 4:30 to 5:30 PM on April 6th. Please remember to dress warmly on these cold winter days. The White Bear Lake Area Educational Foundation, Through the Closet, has jackets, mittens, hats, and scarves available for district families in need. Should you know any family that could benefit from the generosity of our community, please contact the closet at closetwblaef@gmail.com. Members of our foundation and other volunteers will then contact the family and make confidential arrangements to help those who do not already have warm clothes. Those families who have cold weather items to donate are invited to contact the White Bear Lake Area Education Foundation at 651-407-7696. All right, Ms. Adams, are you on tonight? And do you have a student liaison update? All right, I will keep moving. So this is where we typically give you a school board an update on our COVID-19 planning. So we are returning to in-person learning. So with guidance allowing for elementary-aged children to return to in-person learning, those families who choose to return to in-person learning for their elementary-aged children will do so on a phased schedule. Grades K through 2 will return to in-person learning on Tuesday, January 19th, and grades 3 through 5 will return to in-person learning on Monday, February 1st. So we are currently discussing the possibility of bringing middle school and high school students back to school. We're evaluating our middle school and high school learning models based on guidance from the Minnesota Department of Health and the Minnesota Department of Education, as well as our local data. And more information will be made available within the next week or so. Just so you know, the guidance changed for elementary level, the elementary level back in December, and so that new guidance is allowing us to move ahead with the plan that we have in place. So far, the guidance hasn't changed for middle and high school. And so we are following the guidance that was given out last summer. And so that's what we're still using at this point. Our Elementary Distance Learning Academy, so families who chose to enroll their children in the district's Elementary Distance Learning Academy received information, or confirmation emails late last week. Current Central Middle School Dean Amber Walsh will serve as the principal and will be in contact soon with families who are enrolled in the academy. All right, board members, if you have any questions about any of the reports or the COVID-19 plan, we're happy to field those and I know other cabinet members are here as well.
Thank you very much, Dr. Kazmercheck. Are there questions for Dr. Kazmercheck regarding his report? Ms. Beloit?
Yeah, I was wondering, do we have any sense of what the other districts are doing at the secondary level for in-person? Are they coming back in-person hybrid or 100% in-person? I think Madam Edey voted on the last Monday? Or no?
Yeah, districts in the area are mostly talking about returning to a hybrid at this point. In-person, we'd have to see the county case rates dip quite a bit lower than where they currently are. The good news is the case rates have returned back down to more reasonable numbers. And so if that trend were to continue, we'll see more and more districts making a move. But you know, there's not, there aren't, there aren't a lot of area districts that have made definitive plans as of yet, but I know the conversations are happening. So I think we're, many of us are in a similar spot.
Can you remind me what the rate was at when we moved to virtual? Right before Thanksgiving?
Yeah, I could look it up. We were pushing, ultimately, I think we topped out at over 150 and so we were spiking pretty quickly. Once we hit, once we hit above 30, it seemed like we started moving to 50 to 75 to 100 pretty quickly. So it was, in addition to the rate that we were at, it was also the trajectory that we were seeing. And so that contributed to the rate of increase was pretty substantial. Now, the rate of decrease has been substantial in the last few weeks, so that's a good sign.
So you said our combined was what number again? Is it 50 something, 53?
Our latest one?
Yeah.
Yeah, just give me a second. I can get that for you. Our combined.
I want to say it's 44.
Yeah, it was 44, I think. Yep.
So how quickly are we thinking if we decide that we're going to move back to in-person hybrid? How quickly could we do that?
Yeah, I think that's a good question. You know, there's some systemic challenges with that. It's hard to pivot too quickly. We are starting with grades 3 through 5 on February 1. That's the start of our secondary, that's our new semester is February 1. So is it realistic to think about that as being a target date? I think the more conversations we have internally, the more that date might be problematic. Number one, given the numbers have leveled off in the mid-40s at this point. And number two, just, you know, for example, transportation, getting transportation fully functional again at the elementary will be a big focus that week. So those conversations are ongoing. I think it might be a little optimistic to say February 1 at this point, but again, there's a lot of factors to consider.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Beloit.
We, I'm looking for my document so I can give you that number. Yep, so our blended rate of all the different counties that were made up of was 44 and that was down from 68 with last week's report. So it's come down. So back in November, we were pushing upwards, we were getting close to 100 at that point. When we made.
Thanks. Thank you. Ms. Allison, I thought I saw your hand up. Is that, I have a limited amount of people that I can see, so I did see a hand up for Ms. Allison. Did you have a question?
Yes, thank you. Some of my questions were answered by Ms. Beloit's questions, but I wanted to ask about vaccines. If there's any information coming from MDH and MDE about a timeline for educator and staff vaccination?
I think we have one of our nurses on tonight and they probably could give a, well, they'll give the same update I probably would give and that we're waiting for more information, but I don't know if, Molly or Vanessa, are you on?
Yeah, I'm here. Thank you all. The updates right now are coming from MDH and MDE. There, as information is trickling in, we are taking those updates in stride. What we know so far was the latest release, which was January 8th, where they said educators are going to be in 1B for the vaccine rollout. And every local health department is tackling, you know, schools in their area and the community around them that they need to vaccinate. So Ramsey County, Washington County, and Anoka County are all on 1A Tier 1 right now and they're almost done with that and then they'll start 1A Tier 2. So there's three tiers in 1A and then educators are 1B, which is the same group as community members who are over 75. So I think rough estimates, probably, we're going to hear more specifics in February.
And do you have a sense, Ms. House, of of the timeline when that comes? I mean, will there be enough vaccines to inoculate our entire education community? How long does it take to be effective?
I don't have any information about the number of vaccines that they were given. I think our entire state was given less than what they thought initially, which is what has delayed our rollout. So I don't know how that's going to be impacted. How long it takes to be effective is, we base that off of what the FDA says. So you know, Pfizer and Moderna have different times in between the vaccine, so it's going to depend on what vaccine our staff are given and we don't have control over which one we're given. So that will make a difference and then it's two weeks after the last dose that you're considered fully vaccinated. So really, you're looking at roughly about a six-week time from the first dose before you're fully protected.
Okay. That helps. Thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Thompson, do you have a question?
I do. Deb and Jessica hit on a couple of them, but I was wondering if we have any more information on the new Distance Learning Academy structure? Is there any details, like how that's going to work and do we have any more info?
Dr. Glastby, do you want to speak to the Distance Learning Academy?
Yeah, Amber Walsh is our principal for that. She's working with, right, I think as we speak, working with the principals to talk with teachers and put together class lists and so focusing on our K2. And so really building on the parameters that were set with our distance learning and then playing together those teachers and finding what worked and what's similar across those grade-level teams and then developing some common parameters within those teams. And so K2 will start next week after those transition time and so setting some professional development time. And she's really thinking through all of that and thinking about how to connect with their staff. And so do you have specifics in terms of, you know, Amber would be able to offer more as she works with her staff, but I don't want to talk and add details, but really building on the structure that we had and really wanting to, because our principals and grade-level teams had established relationships with families and routines, there was a wide variety of different ways that distance learning was occurring for students. And so how do we build on what people? And so how do we build on what people have done and felt success with? And then how does she pull that together with, um, in our new academy and, and building that with our, our educators?
Um, I just, I know we had all received some communications from parents in regards to it with questions. I guess my, I guess one question maybe would be, um, do we have a sense of whether students will be losing the teachers that they currently have if they are going to go into this distance learning academy?
There's, there is change for students. You know, we tried to minimize that for students who've been in distance learning and had a, a dedicated distance learning teacher. I think we were able to, um, you know, minimize that, but not in all cases. And so there, there will be change for students and, and staff, which is, it is difficult for families and, and our educators for sure.
Okay, do we, and are we offering any sort of support? I mean, as we all know, this is a trying time, this whole year has been for all of us. And our students have definitely felt the effects of it. But, um, especially, you know, I mean, it doesn't matter what age or grade they're in. It hurts them no matter what. Do we have? I just, I worry about changing on them again. I mean, we've asked of them so much and we've changed so many things. And I know we, we don't have full control over everything. But trying to help them the best that we can, uh, to manage it is, and I know it's, there is no good answer. We have discovered that more than anything in 2020. But now we're in a new year and I think it's still going to be a little challenging, but.
I, yeah, we have talked with, with principals, with, um, leadership on how can we help with that transition in terms of, um, you know, when there's teacher transition, making sure as best we can that there's opportunities for connection and, um, you know, really trying to talk through it. But you're right, it is a, definitely, I don't want to underestimate that it is a challenging time for everyone involved. And it, and people have made connections and this is more transition than we're ever used to in our, especially in our elementary programs.
And then one question, and maybe, uh, Dr. Kazmicek is the right one to answer it. But, uh, I, I was a little concerned that we had asked families to make this be a decision that would go through the rest of the year. Have we maybe possibly, uh, is there a way we're rethinking that or are we not rethinking that? And a, a way to get these students back? I mean, if the numbers continue to go down the way that we've seen them go down, which I'm hopeful that they will, and hopefully people are, um, seeing, you know, when we keep the numbers down, it's better for all of us and getting our students back in school. Is there a way we can possibly consider getting them in for that last quarter of the year? Um, or are we sticking with the, they're in the distance learning for the rest of the year?
Yeah, the challenge is we have to create a balance between what we can do in person and what we can do, um, with distance learning. If we have a, if we have a, uh, you know, a mass, um, request to go back to full in-person, we, we would likely need to do yet another transition and, and make adjustments. But, um, um, you know, I think at this point, we, we needed parents to think about where they could be so that we could actually create a model that would be sustainable moving forward. Now, um, again, we, if a, if a parent reaches out and, and in, in April or May and says, hey, is there a way for me to get my student back in? We would certainly work with that parent. I don't know, Dr. Gillespie, I, I don't know, you've had the conversations you've had with principals, how, how that has gone regarding this question, but.
Yeah, I've had conversations with some families too. It's a balancing act. So, you know, we would, we would love to be able to be flexible as a system, but every single time it, it comes into that same question that you just asked around transitions for students. And so the only way that we could truly know the staffing that we would need to have a sustainable model is to ask for a commitment through the end of the year. And so to have a, the ability to then move again would cause an additional transition for students and families and, and teachers. And so, you know, it's hard, as you, as we all know, to predict how the future will look and what that might look like. But it's balancing some really difficult decisions. And so really focusing on making this distance learning academy a really high-quality educational experience, which we have, our educators have done amazing things this year. And I really, um, we're, we're proud of what we've done through distance learning and, and being able to offer that through the end of the year. And then, um, you know, we always try to work with unique situations. But, um, how do you manage that with yet another transition for our students? Because it would impact our system in ways that, um, I don't, I think would be hard for our students and staff again to have. So it's, it's a, it's a tough balancing act.
That it is, and I thank you all for all the work that you guys do. So thank you for answering my questions.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Are there any other questions, uh, for Dr. Kazmicek with the superintendent's report?
This is Marge with a question.
Dr. New, Dr. Newmaster.
I'll figure out how to lower my hand at some point on here. Um, okay, some of my questions have been well answered. And since nobody has a crystal ball or knows how fast that vaccine is coming out. I mean, I think all of us were hoping that is the light at the end of the tunnel and that it will speed up. So I guess I'm asking because there were so many hard issues with staffing. The vaccine isn't going to solve it all before things start up again. How are we doing with covering staffing, assuming that we will have distance learning? We don't, we have that set in a model. But if you've got people in the schools, have we done a lot of extra work in, in finding ways to cover for people? As we look at our own board, people who have to be in quarantine or who, who will get sick for a while. We still are going to be dealing with that battle. And so that's one thing. And, and my, that's a question for Dr. Kazmicek. And my other question or just statement is acknowledging all the people that did write in about how they agonize over what model they're picking. And I can just say, our parents are, you know, truly dedicated, but so are the people trying to solve this almost impossible solution. So I think everybody's got to be patient, but let's hope we don't have to be too patient for the vaccine. And that'll help us. But how are we going to cover? Because that seems like many districts, as I listened to people at the Association of Metropolitan School Board last Friday, many school districts, that's one of their biggest problems is, is how do we cover classrooms?
Yep, thank you, Dr. Newmaster. And, um, Matt Monz, are you available?
Yeah, absolutely.
But I, I'll just start off by saying that, uh, the staffing challenges that we experienced in, in October, November, leading up to the decision to move to distance learning, those, um, I mean, some of those challenges aren't going to go away, um, obviously. So, so there still will be the need to find substitutes and to quarantine and, and to do all those things. We, we know that will be part of the equation moving forward. Mr. Monz, do you have anything to add?
No, I think that's been a pretty consistent refrain from me as well as I've been working with our, um, labor leaders, et cetera. As we are going to run into, to a lot of those same problems. At the same time, we've continued to hire. In addition to that, and we've continued to try to look at things a little differently, we've also certainly learned a little bit. It will help to, um, have a sizable population of our elementary students in a distance learning academy. And then in addition to, it's going to be a slightly different job, at least at the elementary level to sub, in that it's going to be a little, uh, more similar to what that traditional role has looked like. And so we're hoping that we can see a little better rate, um, in our traditional sub pool as well in terms of, uh, being able to accept positions. So, um, this is not going to be without its challenges, but, uh, but we're hopeful we can make it happen here.
Thank you, Mr. Monz. Dr. Newmaster, are you, or does that answer your questions?
As well as anyone can, you know? But I, but I do hope, I do hope that soon the vaccine will be as organized as it was if you're old like me. And remember the swine flu lineup and all of the other things that we just marched through so obediently, not worrying about it, I guess. And, um, I hope that'll give us some protection for our classroom teachers soon.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Newmaster. Is there anybody else, uh, that has got their hand up that I'm not seeing that has a question? All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Kazmicek, for your report, uh, unless there's anything else, uh, regarding your report.
Yeah, nope, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we will move into our first discussion item, which is D1, uh, which is the fiscal year 20 annual audit report. Uh, Mr. Walt, are you there?
I am. Yes, thank you, Chair Mullin. Members of the board, our student rep tonight, Ms. Tessama and Dr. Kazmicek. Each year, the district works with our certified public accounting firm of Malloy, Montague, Karnowski, Radosovich and Company, MMKR, to complete our fiscal audit for the prior year. Jim Ickton from MMKR is here for his annual visit, summarizing the audit report for the board. Also with us tonight is Andy Johnson, our director of finance, to assist with any questions regarding the audit as well. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Ickton. Welcome, Jim.
Uh, thanks, Tim. Uh, members of the school board, superintendent, uh, my name is Jim Ickton with MMKR CPAs, uh, here this evening to give a, an update, uh, on the audit report for the year ended June 30th, 2020. And, uh, I believe there's a PowerPoint that's on the screen, which is, uh, what I will follow along with. I think somebody's looking for me. Is that right, Tim?
Yep.
All right. So, uh, the, uh, purpose of the, the audit is to, um, uh, audit the district's financial statement. So it is a requirement in state law that the school district complete a annual financial statement. That financial statement has actually been expanded to, uh, be completed as a comprehensive financial statement. That particular financial statement is then, uh, submitted for certificate of achievement in excellence in financial reporting through the Association of School Business Officials, um, as well as the Government Finance Officers Association. Our role, uh, in that requirement is to provide opinions on that financial statement. Uh, as part of those opinions, we're also required then by state law and by audit requirements to complete an audit of your internal controls specifically, um, related to those financial statements. We also are required to complete a, a single audit of federal awards. The district receives significant amount of federal dollars and, and the federal government, uh, provides a, a guideline called a single audit for us to audit those federal awards. And then lastly, we audit your compliance with Minnesota-specific laws and regulations, uh, based on a guide that's published by the Office of the State Auditor. So you'll see on the next slide, um, we issue, uh, uh, as part of this process, a management report. And then in that management report, it provides the information on the audit results for the year, really for the purpose of, of providing information such that you could read the summary and get an idea on the audit when and the audit results, uh, in a written format. And I'll cover tonight, uh, some of the highlights of that particular management report. So first and foremost, uh, the opinion on those financial statements that was provided this year was an unmodified opinion. That truly is a clean opinion. It was the opinion that you were looking for going into this particular audit. That audit opinion did provide what's called an emphasis of a matter. Uh, it really isn't a modification to the opinion. It's really just pointing out that the district implemented a governmental accounting standard this year in Gatsby Statement 84. Uh, I don't need to get into the details of that, but it is important to understand that there were some changes in, in the way the district reported its fiduciary funds in the year. And that particular item is highlighted in the opinion that was issued. So as part of this audit, I mentioned, we do provide, uh, results, uh, and opinions on your internal controls over financial reporting. As part of these, uh, opinions, we did issue one, a particular finding, and that relates to the segregation of duties in particular related to payroll transactions. This particular finding, uh, reports that, yeah, we found as part of our audit processes that, uh, internal controls specifically related to the relationship between payroll reporting and the, uh, functions of the various departments within those particular transactions could be improved in terms of segregating, segregating those duties. So as part of any audit, uh, um, um, my communication as part of any findings relates to the importance of the corrective action plans. As part of any audit, uh, we, we come at this particular, or any audit as a learning experience. Uh, all audits have findings or at least some recommendations provided. And the importance behind, uh, the findings is that the district is taking them, uh, seriously as well as issuing corrective action in terms of, uh, trying to and attempting to eliminate the findings moving forward. Uh, you'll find as part of the distribution of our reports, we did provide, uh, a corrective action plan, uh, the district did. And those particular corrective action plans were written such that we do not anticipate these findings, uh, will be coming back again next year. So I believe, uh, as part of the finance office and in, in the communication to the board, the district will continue to work through that corrective action plan in an effort to segregate those duties properly, uh, uh, in fiscal 2021. So moving on to the next bullet point, uh, I did mention the district is required to complete a single audit of federal awards. And if anybody has been around this particular process, um, uh, might recognize that, uh, my audit report is actually, uh, being presented in January, which typically would have been done in either November or December. Uh, the reason that occurred is, is written on the PowerPoint there in, in that the, the audit was delayed for a number of reasons, but probably most importantly, due to the fact that the federal government, uh, uh, did not issue guidance related to the single audit of federal awards, specifically the additional funding the district receiving, is receiving related to, to some of the, the pandemic, the COVID-19, AID, CARES Act funding until late in December of 2020. Uh, as a result of that, the Minnesota Department of Education allowed, uh, uh, or issued guidance late, probably on the 20th, well, 23rd, I think it was December, allowing, uh, audit firms and districts to, uh, complete their single audit portion of federal awards after the deadline, uh, in this case, uh, in January. You'll see in part of my presentation, we did not, uh, complete that process and we did not issue those reports. And thus, uh, I don't have results this evening. We'll, we'll certainly follow up with the board once those, uh, particular, uh, results are complete and, and the information on the single audit is available. Uh, so the next, uh, slide mentions the findings were specifically related to, uh, your Minnesota LEO compliance audit. There are four findings you'll note there. Uh, the four findings are listed. I'll, I'll describe them briefly. The district does have another post-employment benefit trust fund. And in law, that you are required to report, uh, the investment returns of that particular fund to the Office of the State Auditor. Uh, we noted that this past year for fiscal 2020, that that report was filed, but it was not filed, uh, by the deadline, uh, that is in statutory language. The second finding relates to the requirement that the district is required to obtain, uh, a withholding affidavit from various contractors verifying that payments, uh, of withholdings of their contractors are being made. This particular certificate is required to be received prior to the final payment of any contract, uh, for business with those individuals. Uh, we noted, uh, during our testing this year that one contract we tested, the district had not attained, obtained that withholding payment verification. The third, third point, bullet point relates to the unclaimed property report. Minnesota state law requires governmental entities to report to the state any sort of unclaimed property. Probably the best example of unclaimed property would be an outstanding check, a check that was issued to a vendor that was never cashed. Uh, that, that type of example of unclaimed property is required to be submitted to the, to the Department of Revenue, uh, every three years, more or less, uh, reporting any items that are older than three years to the Department Commissioner of Revenue. Uh, that particular report was not filed, uh, this past year. And we noted that as part of our audit. And the last bullet point, uh, state law requires the district to, to obtain multiple quotes when it comes to contracts, specifically those within the range of 25,000 to 150,000 in terms of statutory requirements. As part of our testing, we noted, uh, one quote or one contract that was not obtained, uh, multiple quotes during the past year. Again, that you'll note in these particular findings, uh, that corrective action plans have been submitted and, and were provided to the district, uh, board as well as administration, uh, in terms and were provided to the district board, as well as administration, in terms of how they're going to go about complying with these particular findings in the future. So the second part of any audit discusses, and this starts on the next, oh, actually, I'm going to go back. The next PowerPoint language, no, you can go forward one more. There you go. As you can see here, my PowerPoint, my document does provide information on the follow-up to prior year findings, ultimately reporting how the district has done in terms of the prior year findings. So in the past audit, you'll note that we did provide a finding on the ineffective internal controls over payroll processing. We noted last year a number of areas of improvement in the processing of payroll. And as you can see, the corrective action plan did get completed this past year, and that was not a current year finding. So I see in the hand in the air. So Deb, you want to ask a question?
Yeah, please. So what's the difference between the finding from from last year on the effective internal controls over payroll and processing and the current finding that we need to separate some of those rules? Why is that not considered under the same umbrella for a finding?
That's a great question. So the first finding that we talked about relates to segregation of duties. So segregation of duties can be described as any type of transaction. It could be cash receipts, could be cash disbursements and payroll. Any transaction that's running through the district is required to have multiple people involved in that particular transaction. So for instance, in the area of payroll, no one can get paid without multiple individuals being part of the process. So typically, you would see Human Resources Department approving a contract. That particular contract is given to payroll, who then looks at time sheets or information for how much a person worked, and they authorize the payment of that particular payroll record, and then another individual makes those payments. So that's an example of segregation of duties, just in a short description. This particular finding on effective internal controls related to the processing of payroll specifically. We noticed some weaknesses in the payroll department in terms of how they were processing. And if I remember correctly, they related to some delays in the payment of time sheet employees. We noted a number of time sheets that were processed, not as speedy as we would have expected as part of last year's audit, and we did not note that this year.
Okay, and my other question was the multiple quotes that weren't obtained, what was that contract? Do you remember?
I don't know. Certainly, we have it on record, but I don't have it right here in front of you. We can provide that data to you.
I believe it was a van, you know, Transportation Department, and it was a matter of the type of van that they were looking for. They couldn't find multiple quotes on it. But what we should have done is documented that better.
That's a good example, Tim, that Tim's talking about, you know, in the quote setting, you are required to obtain multiple quotes. And if you aren't able to obtain multiple quotes, it is required to have documentation that file as to, well, why didn't I obtain multiple quotes? If you are having a difficult time, simply a memo to the file, a memo as to what you did to try to obtain would have been sufficient in that case.
So then whose responsibility is it? So if we're not withholding, or one of the companies we didn't have, what was it, withholding payment verification wasn't
Yes.
obtained for a particular contract that we had with someone? Who's, what, I guess this might be a Tim to Mr. Wald question. We've got so many contracts that we're going through right now. What's the process that we're going through to get those things? Because that's going to be a big job the next couple of years with all the contracts with all the building projects.
Yeah, we have quite a few projects going through. In this, in the building projects that we have, that will be managed through our construction management firm, Kraus Anderson. So there'll be eyes on that. And oftentimes, we work with a management firm when we do roofs, for example, and they take care of that. So in some cases where we're not, that was missed between our Facilities Department and our Accounting Department.
So then, do we, the audit next year, would that look at what Kraus Anderson submits for the contracts? Or is that something completely separate that Kraus Anderson would be responsible for? Or can we get dinged for that again if we have a contract where that withholding payment verification hasn't been obtained from Kraus Anderson?
It is a requirement of the district to have that information on file. Even in a situation where you're relying on outside expert, or in this case Kraus Anderson, to obtain that information, you are required to have that information on file, and they would have to provide that to the district so it is on file. It is not unusual to rely on an outside company to do that for you. It is, however, a responsibility of the district to make sure that they are following through.
So then the eyes on that is Kraus Anderson, and when it comes to the district, the eyes on that when it gets to the district would be whom?
Our accounting department.
Accounting?
Yep.
Yeah, Deb, and if it goes through building operations, it usually crosses my desk. And I've worked with the auditors also, and we make sure that I, I think it's called an IC 34.
IC 134, yes.
So I always look for that since we had gotten dinged for it once before. So there's many eyes on it.
Okay. And I bring it up, and I'm not, I don't think that anybody is derelict in anything that they've been doing, but this is going to become that much more important going forward over the next couple of years with all these contracts. And what we stated, we're going to do with these contracts in terms of making sure that we're following minimum, what's it called? Can't think of it, but what they're paying the employees, this would be one of the things that we would receive that would tell us that they were complying with minimum standard wage.
All right. I'll continue on. Please let me know if you have any other questions along the way, but if you want to move to the next slide. So my management report also then gets into the second part of the audit. I've mentioned all of the areas that relate to compliance portion of the audit. The second part of the audit is really the financial results. So in our particular audit, we do provide information, not only on your financial results, but how they might compare to other districts in the state, as well as other metro area districts. So the first particular graph you'll see on the page shows fund balances as a percentage of expenditures. This particular ratio is a pretty widely used ratio in terms of developing what financial well-being in the fund balances of every district annually. So this particular graph is a statewide graph, and it does not, it isn't the same numbers that the district are using in terms of percentages. This is the MVEs percentages. But it does give you a pretty good feel for fund balances. So the yellow graph is showing fund balances statewide, and you can see fund balances are roughly about 20% of operations and have been probably over the last six or seven years. It's going down slightly, but it's pretty, pretty flat. The district's fund balances, as you can see, have been declining and really have systematically and really, I would say, gone down as expected since 2014. That has really been planned in the budgets of the district. And it really was anticipated that they would flatten off, starting with 2020. And I'll get to some of the results individually as we get to some of the future graphs. So the next graph does provide information on general fund, as well as other governmental funds revenues on a per-student basis. This particular graph shows that the district's revenues are roughly $15,010 per student of the district. That compares to a 2019 metro area average of roughly $16,274. So revenues per student are actually below averages in total, both in the general fund, as well as some of the other funds. Some of the things you might see on that graph that stand out to me certainly is that overall state AIDS per student did increase. Mostly that relates to the general increase in the general education formula that took place this past year. You also see some significant declines in specialist, special revenue funds, both food service and community service. Both of those relate specifically to the pandemic. There were several months, obviously, in fiscal 2020 where revenues declined, specifically in those funds due to the closing of facilities during that time. So we also then show expenditures per student, which is the next particular graph. This is a little harder to see, but overall, the district spends $15,239 per student, when that compares to about $16,138 on a 2009 metro area school district. Pretty much in total, you would anticipate that expenditures would be about the same dollar amount, less than average, which you're experiencing there, about $1,000 less per student spent compared to the metro area averages. Also, that relates specifically to the revenues, where you're not getting the same level of revenues that you would see to other metro area schools. Some highlights, again, there, you're seeing in the overall, the general fund expenditures actually decline per student in two areas that stood out to us, which was the sites and buildings category, as well as the instructional support services. Both of those categories went down specific to the pandemic. There were several months, again, where school buildings weren't open and overall costs were declining. The other item that stands out is in the debt service fund. You're seeing a pretty big jump in the dollars per student in that category, and that specifically relates to scheduled payments for your OPEB bonds. So as we look at the next graph, you'll see this particular graph shows the general fund financial position. There's three items that are on the graph, including the fund balance, cash balance are both indicators of financial well-being, and then the expenditures to show and reflect the size of the operation. Overall, the district budgeted an increase in fund balance of about $500,000. And you can see that graph, the overall fund balance declined about 2.4 million, I believe is the number. Some of that was in restricted categorical areas, and some of that was in the unrestricted categories. And I'll show you why that was in the next couple of graphs. If you go to the next graph, it actually gives you some detail around that. You can see a total fund balance at the end of the year is about $15.7 million. Unassigned amounts was $7.2 million, and that compares to an unassigned amount of about $9.6. That particular unassigned amount roughly relates to about a 6.2% fund balance as a percentage of operations in 2020. The district does have a policy in place related to fund balance. That particular policy states that you strive to maintain a minimum unassigned fund balance of 12.5 to 16.7% of operations. As you can see, that 6.2% number is below that range. And as auditors, we point that out as part of this presentation, so that the board is aware of it. Certainly, the administration is aware of it, and will be coming forth to the school board with some more information in the near future as it relates to any particular action that might come about as it relates to that particular fund balance policy. Going on to the next graph, we do always want to reflect on why the fund balance went down as it did. And you can see in this particular graph, some of the general fund revenues that relates to trends from actual to budget and also a prior year. Total revenues of this particular year were, let's see, were under budget by about $4 million. Most of that related to the, in the area of property taxes, which was about $1.4 million under budget. And then state revenues were under budget by about $2.7 million this past year. So that's a pretty significant portion of that particular amounts that were under decline, causing the decline in fund balance. This particular number was offset by the expenditures. And if you go to the next graph, most districts, including yourself, saw expenditures under budget for the year. In total, expenditures were under budget by about $2.3 million. Almost 2 million of that, actually, excuse me, 1.2 million of that relates to the expenditure categories I referenced earlier. You'll find that in most districts, due to COVID-19 pandemic, things like supplies and materials, capital-related items were significantly under budget due to the closure of those particular buildings and some of the programming that occurred. The other area that the district saw budget savings was in the area of salaries. And you can see that particular graph, when you add in salaries, they were mainly under budget in the area of regular instruction, classroom instruction, and that totaled about $1.2 million. So overall, the district did see a decline in fund balance of about 2 million, as I mentioned earlier. So before I open it up for questions, and I will, before we get done with my presentation, I'll go to the next graph, which does actually provide information on the other governmental funds. The district has certainly significant operations in the food service and community service special revenue programs. The food service program, you can see there, did see, experienced a decline in its fund balance. That particular fund balance decline was budgeted. It was expected that that was to occur. And the Community Service Fund also saw a decline in fund balance as well, but that was quite a bit more than what was expected in the budget. Most or all of that related to the decline in tuition and fees in that particular program. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, programming almost halted completely at the end of the year. So tuition fees were less than budget by about $800,000, which is why you're experiencing that overall decline in fund balance. So if you move to the next graph, it might be the last one. There we go. This, the district also does have a fund for its health benefits. The district is self-insured for health benefits. You can see on this particular page that the fund balance in this particular fund, the net position increased by almost $1.7 million for self-insured health benefits. This particular trend has been experienced all over the metropolitan area in these audits that we do, particularly because health benefits, the claims were significantly lower due to the pandemic, if you remember right. elective procedures were not occurring during the pandemic for many people, and thus the claim ratios and the claim experience is way down, thus the operating expenses going down. One cautionary tale when you look at that is that might swing back the other way. Let's hope it does, because that would mean that we're able to go back and get those elective procedures. But certainly something to be cautious of when you look at that particular fund balance. So moving on to the next graph, okay, that might be, there we go. The district does have other funds. I'm not going to get into details regarding those, including the dental benefits fund. You also have an OPEB trust that counts for your OPEB benefits. And then you have a Severance Internal Service Fund, all of which are really having positive experiences. Nothing to be concerned about in those particular funds. So I think in summary, which I think is the next PowerPoint, we will move to the next presentation. There we go. I did mention that the district did have an unmodified opinion, a clean opinion on the district's financial statements. I mentioned that the district does receive a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. If you haven't taken a look at the CAFR, it is an exciting 175-page read, if you get a chance to look at that. And then I mentioned the findings that we reported related to legal compliance and internal controls as well. And then lastly, we did see the district's experience in declining general fund balance, and certainly, Tim Wald and his staff will be providing further information in terms of reaction to that in future board meetings. So with that, I open it up to any questions that you have for me on this presentation.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions regarding the audit information?
Mr. Chair, I've got a few questions.
Mr. Chapman.
Yeah, Mr. Eikten, in terms of the findings,
how, do you know offhand how the number of findings compares to other years, particularly last year, recent years in the past? I'm just trying to recall, you know, what the what the numbers were in the past. We've got, what, five here? And it seems like there might be a few more than what we've seen, but I'm not sure. So that's my first question, if you could speak to that.
Well, I didn't do any sort of analytics and go back and count the number of findings, you know, to particularly answer that question. But I do, but I I do know that this is more than more findings than you've experienced in the past and certainly more findings than the administration would prefer. This is more than than they expected and really, it is more than you would have seen in the past, exactly.
Now, are these all items that you look at on an annual basis? Or are any of the items kind of focus items for this this audit period?
Yeah, these are, all of the findings that you see here are all items that we would have audited in the past. There are no new audit items that you might see here. Probably the only one that's newer is the reporting of the investment report on your OPEB plan. That is a legislation that that really started to probably come into play in 2019. So it's only been a few years that that's actually been a requirement. So that's newer, but the rest of it would have been something we would have tested each and every year as part of the audit.
Okay. In terms of of the findings relative to other districts, particularly metro districts of similar size, any anything you can opine or or anything insight that you can give as far as these, the number of findings here relative to what you see in other districts?
Yeah. This is more than, certainly more findings than you would see traditionally in a in a metro area school district, at least for for my firm in my area of expertise. The the most of the findings here do relate to at least legal compliance areas, which are less severe probably than some of the other areas that you might anticipate. You know, the they typically, at least the ones that leave applies are mostly related to filings and, you know, big compliance, those kind of things. You know, probably the one that stands out to me that's most important in terms of corrective action relates to the payroll segregation of students. I think that that's a key element of controls in the district. And that probably is of a higher priority in terms of fraction, not that they're all not a priority, but that one probably stands out to me in terms of the the most important in terms of fraction going into.
Okay. And the last question that I've got has to do with our fund balance. Obviously, the last several years, we've seen a pretty substantial decline in that. And again, I guess, looking at other districts of metro districts in particular of comparable size, are you seeing declines in fund balances to that extent or or not? Any any thoughts there?
Yeah, so so overall, this past year, most of the districts that we work with experienced either a.
Sorry to interrupt, but I thought we should let Dr. Davis know that he's not muted right now. In case he didn't know.
There you go. Okay, thank you, thank you. In terms of the overall general nature, what I would expect to see in terms of fund balance, based on my clients, most districts either experienced a flat fund balance in 2020 or they experienced an increase in fund balance. As I mentioned, because of the pandemic, the expenditures were significantly below budget in most or all school districts. Not everyone, but most, because they were just closed, the facilities were closed, supplies were not being, you know, paid, some capital items would have been delayed, which is what the district, your your district experienced, White Bear experienced as well. The decline here relate relates specifically to the lower than expected revenues, which is, you know, is really an individual district issue and not a global issue that we're experiencing elsewhere.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Are there other questions regarding the audit? Ms. Bloyd.
Yeah. Where would we find the corrective action plans?
It's a great question. I I didn't do the distribution, I would have, I would have provided them. So I don't know what documents you have in front of you, but if you look at the special purpose audit reports that were provided as part of the information, they they would be included as part of the findings. There's an area called responses to findings. There's also a separate document that would have been distributed that provides the corrective action plans as well. And I I'm not sure if that was fully distributed to, we we would have distributed it to all women and staff, but I'm not sure it got reported or the board back in.
Yeah, I don't think those are distributed.
They're not.
We can certainly, we can get to those, I can get those or Tim can get those.
We have some copies, right?
We have them, we can email them out, yep.
Yeah. So our next step was we'll be meeting with the executive finance committee next week. And then that will be followed by a discussion at the January 25th board work session. And then the fiscal year 21 adjusted budget will come to the board at the February, February regular board meeting. So you'll be hearing a lot about budget over the next several board meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Walt. Is there any other questions, comments regarding the audit? Okay, Mr. Walt, do you have anything else to? I know that we're going to be voting on and we're taking action on this audit at the end of the, during the operational items. But if there is there anything else at this time?
No.
All right, thank you very much. We will now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
We will now move to our next discussion item, which is the first reading of school board policies. There are several, so I'm going to go down the list and read them. Policy 401, which is the equal employment opportunity. Policy 407, which is the employee's right to know. Employee, policy 409, the employees publications. Policy for, excuse me, 497, when neptism. Policy 499, student teaching. Policy 519, interviews of students by outside agencies. Policy 529, student notification of violent behavior by students. Policy 599, academic recognition. And then policy 609, religion. Are there any questions regarding any of those policies for the first reading? Seeing none, we will bring them Ben them back for the second reading at the next board meeting. If you have any concerns or comments in between now and the next board meeting, I would encourage you to make sure that you bring that forward to Dr. Kazmercheck and we can move through. We will now move into our first operational item, which is E1, which is the approval of the bids of the new elementary school in Hugo. Mr. Walt, I believe this is you and Mr. Rozier.
Yes, correct, thank you. Yeah, Dan Rozier, our director of facilities and grounds is with us tonight as well. So already this year, we brought six bid approvals for construction related to the 2019 bond referendum to the board. And all those projects are currently in process and construction is going well. Most recently, we published the bid specs for the new elementary school in Hugo and bids were opened on December 17th. We did a combination of low bid and best value bidding for the multiple work scopes in this project. All work scopes were loaded, were awarded to the low bid with the exception of six of the largest more complex packages that include steel, carpentry, earthwork, mechanical, electric and plumbing. And for those scopes, we utilize best practice bidding or best value bidding practices. Bidding process went really great. We had a tremendous amount of contractors competing for the work in the packet. Tonight is a summary of the bids. We also have with us tonight Kent Henry from Kraus Anderson, and I believe Jason Peterson from Kraus Anderson might be with us as well. So if you have questions about the process, those two can really dig into the nuts and bolts of that. But ultimately, we're recommending the board approve the recommendation to award contracts for the construction of the new elementary school in Hugo in the amount of 23,834,200 dollars as presented in the board agenda.
You've heard the recommended action, is there a motion to do so? Is there a motion to approve the recommended action?
Some.
A motion by Ms. Ellison. I'm going to take us, is that a second from Mr. Chapman?
Yes, yep.
Thank you, and I'll take the second from Mr. Chapman. Is there any discussion regarding the recommended action?
Chairman Mullin, I just have one quick question.
Dr. Arcand.
The best value, can you just highlight that? How, and I know that's different than low bid. And can I just tell me why we went with that and how it works?
Sure. On on, on the more complex work projects, the concern is that you're going to get bids from companies for whom the level of work might be, they might be bidding off more than they can chew. And because these are really complex scopes of work, the concern is that a low bid gets the work and they're not able to complete it. So in in those six areas I described, those are more complex projects that if a contractor doesn't perform, then it can really put the whole project at risk or delay, cause it to delay increasing costs from other contractors. And so when we look at best value, the contractors bid the project and then they are scored based on references, similar experience, have they completed projects similar to the size of that project? They participate in an interview, in an interview. And there are certain requirements within the interview that they have to fulfill. And then all of, and then the cost, of course, and all of those are fulfilled. So the highest number of points they can earn is the dollar value of the project. Low bidder gets a lot of points for being a low bidder, but then they can lose points. They may be a low bid but not have good references and not have experiences commensurate to the work that we're asking them to do. And they could lose points in that regard. And so we had a couple of those areas where the low bidder was not the person who won the project. Mr. Henry, are you on? Kent Henry?
I am.
You want to, are you able to speak just a little bit about about the steel contract?
Yeah, so the the low bid for the steel, I should back up with all these, all these contractors, we do call their references. They list three references and then they list five previous experience or similar experience, I should say. Like Tim said, then we interview everyone as well to kind of get a little more into the detail. It's based off of 100 points, so it's it's 60 points for the low bid. And then we subtract three points for every 20,000 points that they are, $20,000, sorry, that they are higher than the next bid, than the low bid. We call other references and based off those references, we we award them 10 more points. And then based off their previous experience, we order, award them another 10 points and the interview is worth 20 points. In the case of the steel, we we called their references and both the the low bids for their, the two lower bids for the steel, the references weren't weren't really that great. In the case of the low bid, the two of the people actually told us they they wouldn't, they wouldn't use them for a larger contract. So because of that, we gave them a much lower score. Additionally, both of their pre past experience or the low bids past experience was was a lot of smaller projects or not projects that are of this size or providing this amount of steel. Additionally, their their interview, they didn't feel as, we didn't feel as they were as prepared. We're most importantly understood the intensive, the this project as well as the other bidder that we did award it to. So kind of based off of that, we we awarded a point, a certain amount of points to each each bidder. We ended up interviewing the low three bidders. And in this case, the bidder that we gave it to was very prepared in their interview. They provided us with a schedule, they were very specific on product, where, when we would receive steel, when we would receive submittals, issues that they see that they want to work with us to overcome. It was a very good interview compared to the other ones that weren't as prepared. So based off that, we we rewarded them more points and felt like they were the more prepared contractor that can provide the best best value to the district. Hopefully, that provided some additional deep info for you on.
Yes, thank you.
Other questions, comments, concerns? All right. Hearing our see and none, this will require a roll call vote, would ask clerk to please read the roll.
Ellison, aye. Mullin?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Bloyd?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
And the motion passes, thank you all very much. We will now move into our second operational item, E2, which is the approval of the fiscal year 20 and annual audit. Mr. Walt?
Okay, thank you. Just a few minutes ago, we heard from Mr. Aitken from the district's auditing firm of MMKR. And he reviewed the fiscal year 2019, 20 audit report. The next step in the annual budget process is for the board to vote on the approval of the report that was presented. So our recommended action is that the board approve the transport, or excuse me, approve the audit report as presented.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walt. You've heard the recommended action, is there a motion to do so?
Sub moved.
A motion by Dr. Arcand, is there a second?
Second. Second.
Was it a second by Ms. Boyd?
Yeah.
Okay, second by Ms. Boyd, thank you, Dr. Newmaster. You've heard the, there's been a motion and a second, is there any discussion regarding the audit? Hearing our see and none, this will require a roll call vote, would ask clerk to please read the roll.
Ellison, aye. Mullin?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Bloyd?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. We will now move to our next operational item, E3, which is the approval of the first student transportation addendum. Mr. Walt, I believe this is you.
It is, thank you. Including the board agenda as an addendum to the transportation agreement with first student transportation, our primary transportation contractor. First, I'll note that during this distance learning model, we we've kept our drivers employed, although with a reduction in hours for some. So we're still transporting a number of students each day as well as, excuse me, utilizing our drivers to help with meal distribution. So we've only paid drivers for hours that actually worked. In the case of our contractors, they're in a very challenging situation as well. Our contractors in indicate, our contract with first student indicates that we pay for services provided. That kind of suggests a pathway for not paying them during this distance or learning model. The flip side to this is we need them to be viable when we return to in person or hybrid learning. So with that in mind, we negotiated an addendum to the agreement that helps the district minimize expenses while supporting our contractors to stay viable. So key elements in the agreement are that on distance learning days, we'll pay first student 50% of the normal amount for regular routes. District will pay 90% for all special education routes normally scheduled and not run. And that is as identified in the governor's emergency orders and guidance from the Minnesota Department of Education. And we'll do so for as long as those routes qualify for reimbursement. So we'll get reimbursement from those routes for the state, and so we'll continue to pay contractors for 90% of those special education routes. Of course, special education and any any routes that are trans, that are vendors drive for us will pay 100% as per the contract. And then we ask that first student agree to use the payments it receives for the routes not run to cover overhead and pay key personnel necessary to maintain their operation so that they'll be viable when we return to a hybrid or in person model. So that's a summary of the addendum to that student transportation contract. And our recommendation to the board is that you approve the addendum to the first student transportation agreement as presented.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wald. I know that the addendum is in the board packet and would ask for a motion to approve the addendum that's in the board packet.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Ellison. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Thompson. Is there any discussion regarding the addendum? Hearing our see.
Mr. Chapman? I do have a question.
Mr. Chapman.
Yeah, thank you. The, the question being, is this percentage, Mr. Wald, is this in line? Do we know if it's in line with what other districts are, are doing with regard to their contracts for transportation vendors? I'm just curious if, I mean, you know, it certainly makes sense to agree, to agree to me, but just wondering how it would compare or does compare to what other districts are doing, if we know that?
Yeah, there's, there's some variety in what districts are doing, but this is pretty common. So our transportation director meets regularly with the Association of Transportation Directors from Minnesota Public Schools. And so he was able to keep us informed what he was hearing in that arena. And then our attorney, Mick Walzberger, drafted this addendum. And so he had some experience too with other districts that he's been working with.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Are there any other questions? All right, we've got a motion and a second. This will require a roll call vote and would ask the clerk to please read the roll.
Ellison, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
All right, thank you all very much. The motion passes. Next, we will go to E4, which is the School Board Operation Operating Procedures for 2021. In the packet, as we do every, every year, there is the Rules of Order and the Board Agenda Format. And I would ask for a motion to approve the Rules of Order and the Board Agenda Format for 2021.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. There's a motion by Mr. Chapman. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Dr. Arcand. Is there any discussion regarding the motion? Hearing our see and none, this will require a roll call vote. Would ask clerk to please read the roll.
Ellison, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. The motion passes. Next on the agenda is, again, the agenda is E5, which is the School Board Members Compensation for 2021. The, the compensation has remained the same for several years now. And there's a recommended action to keep the same compensation as we had the previous years. And I would ask for a motion to approve that action.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Ellison. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Newmaster. Is there any discussion regarding the recommended action? Hearing our see and none, this will require a roll call vote. Would ask clerk to please read the roll.
Ellison, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you all very much. The next agenda item is E6, which is the Action on the Regular and the Work-Study Meeting Schedule for 2021. Dr. Kazmeczek?
All right, thank you, Chair Mullen, members of the board. So the schedule looks similar to what we normally put in front of you, but I want to pause for a moment and ask a couple of questions. So we've been in virtual now off and on. We're back on again, virtual meetings. I just want to, we want to think about, do we continue this mode or do we talk about going back to in-person? And then I also want to ask about the time of our regular meetings. When we've done virtual meetings, we've moved them to five-thirty. So I just, I, I think that's been the preferred time. Then my, another question I would have is when we move back to in-person, is that something you want to consider in moving our start time to something earlier than seven? So first question, we're in virtual, we're meeting like this. Is there, do you want to discuss not doing that any longer?
Ms. Thompson, I see that she raised her hand and then I'll get you, Ms. Boyd. Ms. Thompson?
Um, yes, sorry. I would recommend that once we have students and educators back in the building that we follow suit and we go back to in-person meetings. As for changing the time, I, I can do, I think five-thirty or seven would work. Okay, so. That's my.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Ms. Boyd?
I'd like to stay virtual until the secondary level goes back. It's my personal opinion.
All right, thank you, Ms. Boyd. Mr. Chapman?
My thought is to, to move to, to the in-person, but of course, allowing those board members who prefer or cannot for, you know, quarantine reasons or whatever to, to continue to, to be virtual. As far as time, I, you know, I kind of prefer the idea of maybe looking at remaining at five-thirty rather than going back to seven o'clock for our regular meeting start time.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Other, anybody else? Ms. Ellison?
I agree with Mr. Chapman. I think we should head back and with Ms. Thompson, I think we should head back into in-person meetings when our elementary teachers and students go back. But also, as Mr. Chapman said, leaving the option for those who need to remain at home for various reasons. I would also prefer the five-thirty start time for all of our meetings.
Thank you, Ms. Ellison. Dr. Arcand?
Thank you. I just have a quick question about our virtual meetings. Those will go as long as we have that governor's order, but when that is allowed to expire, then legally we have to meet in person. Is that correct?
That's my understanding is that we, we would move back. We could do, we, we could prob, well, we could probably figure out a way to do the virtual meetings, but it would fall under a different statute. We wouldn't be under the executive order any longer. You can still have them that way, but we, I'd have, we'd have to, we'd have to publish up on the statute allowing that.
And then the, the other question I have about the five-thirty start. One of the things that we were doing when I started was that student recognition. And if that's, we were running that like at six-thirty. And if we're going at five-thirty and students are involved in extracurricular, they, are they going to be able to get there and are we gonna, are people that want to come to that board meeting? Is that going to create an issue having to come in at five-thirty instead of seven? I don't know. I'm just asking the question. Thank you.
That's a good point, Scott, because if we had to be there at five, I, I would not be able to, to do that.
Well, then a six o'clock start would allow a five-thirty recognition event.
I think that would be very beneficial. Anybody else like to comment on that?
Yeah, even meeting at seven, if they're still doing extracurriculars, they're still doing them at seven too. Just as a side note, sports and theater and all the rest of them, if they're doing them at five-thirty generally, they're still doing them at seven. I prefer the five-thirty start time. It's my two cents.
Thank you, Ms. Boyd. Other questions?
I'll put, I'll, I'll just put in one, two cents worth too. I mean, it doesn't matter to me. I think I'm probably the only one on the board right now that's fully retired. So it doesn't matter to me, but if we're looking at making it possible for parents and kids who need to take notes or get awards, I think five-thirty is probably a little quick. I mean, we have board members that in the past, in the olden days, when there was traffic on the roads and it was hard to get here, who regularly came in under pressure to get here early enough. But to get to the board meeting early enough, so I don't mind moving it earlier, but I, I wonder if we want to move it a whole, what would that be, an hour and a half ahead of where we are now? That's, someday we'll be back to the usual stresses. And someday, hopefully soon, the kids will be involved in a lot of things after school.
Thank you, Dr. Newmaster. Anybody else would like to say or add anything? Okay. Dr. Kazmeczek?
Clear his mud. I still, okay, I do understand that there's a, a desire to move back to in-person. So we will, we will coordinate, we'll do that either on January twenty-fifth work session or coordinate that with the February regular meeting. So one of, one of us to just stay tuned. Does that sound, I'll get word out as, as they will do at one of those meetings. Obviously, you'd still be able to join if you need to remotely. And then in terms of time, I, boy, I don't know. It sounds like either five-thirty or six would probably be satisfactory. Nobody was, nobody was advocating for seven, so I think we can safely suggest five-thirty or six. So I, I.
I, I would ask too, I guess the question really comes down to is what about student recognition? When do you plan on resuming those? And I think that's probably the big question, right? If you're, if we're not doing a student recognition yet until we get some more clarification from the governor, I would tell you that it sounds like five-thirty would probably work.
We could start at thirty, yep.
If your student doing some student recognition, then maybe we look at going to six or something, you know, to make sure we can manage it.
All right, that sounds good. Should we start there then? Start at five-thirty and then once life returns to normal, a little bit more closer to normal, we'll revisit. Okay.
I think that's a fair assessment.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just an idea, and I don't know if logistically or, or anything else would preclude us from seriously considering this when things got back more into pre-COVID states or status. And that would be if, if we are concerned, if, if we as a board would want to move up the start time to say five-thirty or so, but we're concerned about that being too early for student recognition, would there be something, anything that would preclude us from basically recessing or, or building into, into the agenda so that instead of it being at the beginning of the board meeting, we, we, you know, like I say, take a recess or something and then do the recognition and then go back into the board meeting? Just a thought.
I don't think that there is. I think that we can, we can adjust the agenda as long as the agenda is approved because the agenda is approved in the front of every meeting. So we're, we do have the ability to adjust the meeting. I, I, I don't see an issue there. Dr. Kazmeczek, do you, is there anything that you can imagine?
I'd want to talk with Gray and Marissa and see if there's any, nothing comes to mind, but I'd want to just visit about that internally a bit. And I, I think that's a, yeah, that would, I would think that would work, but.
Okay.
Can I add one more? Oh, I see Jessica was ahead of me.
Ms. Ellison?
Thank you. The only thing I would bring up in regards to Mr. Chapman's recommendation is to consider our families who often bring family members with them. And if they bring small children, I just want to be conscious of the fact that, you know, if we've got kids who have a hard time sitting still, that might be a burden on the families and the parents to have, to have them wait. That's what I liked about recognition coming first, is that you could come, do your thing, take pictures and then leave with your family. So I just, I wanted, I wanted to put that out there. So in that vein, I wonder if tonight we can approve the dates of these meetings that are scheduled and then agree to be flexible with, with the times after the first couple of meetings. Is that a place that we could start?
Yeah, I think what, I think what we would do is for the foreseeable future, where, you know, we are, we're in the position we're in, five-thirty start would probably work for several months before we're, or for at least a couple of months before we're back to scheduling in a recognition ceremony. So, but I think we can just start at, with five-thirty and then we'll go forward and we'll make, we'll, we'll figure it out. I don't, I don't think we have to figure it out exactly yet tonight. If we know we're gonna, we're gonna work towards getting back in person and we'll start our regular meetings at five-thirty for the next couple of, couple of meetings, then we'll go from there. Does that sound reasonable?
I'd know that Mr. Chapman had his hand up, Dr. Kazmeczek, so let me let him, give him the ability to ask his question and then I think Dr. Newmaster is after that.
Actually, yeah, Mr. Chair, Dr. Newmaster had her hand up first, so I'll let her go.
I apologize. I don't get to see all the, everybody, right? I got a certain number of people I can see. So, Dr. Newmaster, I apologize.
Oh, that's okay. I'm just gonna add one more thing to the mixing bowl. As we look at the importance of acknowledging kids and we also look at the importance of social distancing, which all the medical professionals are gonna say is gonna last a while beyond this spring. Because we aren't gonna be shaking hands with people or getting close necessarily. So I'm just wondering, I hate to say this because Marissa is overworked, but she's over talented. Is there any way, since this is all streamed or videoed, to put in a video acknowledgement and then we don't have people missing? We've got a school picture of everyone that, you know, did a particular sport or artistic event well. I hate to add one more thing to your very full plate, but I'm wondering, because our kids don't get that acknowledgement and you know darn well, they look at the website and look at it more than once. That's it.
Chair Mullen?
Hold on a second. I, Boyd, I need to get back to Mr. Chapman. I'm gonna let Dr. Kazmeczek answer that. And then we, I'll, I promise I'll get to you.
Well, I, I can respond to Dr. Newmaster. I, I think that's a good idea, but I do think, you know, I'll need to visit with, with Marissa about that. I, I like the idea.
Okay.
Possible next generation, next, next iteration of our awards.
Thank you. Mr. Chapman?
Yeah, I like, first off, the idea too that Dr. Newmaster presented, at least for the time being, while we're still in this whole COVID careful society that we need to have now. Just getting back very quickly and I, and I realize we don't need to make that decision tonight, so I don't want to belabor the point. But I, Ms. Ellison brought up a good point about, you know, young families coming in in particular, or families with small children. I think that, you know, if we, the thought process I had when I brought that up is to have like a time certain, you know, where we would start at like six fifteen, six twenty, six thirty, whatever it may be for the recognition event, so that families would be aware, you know, in advance that we would be doing that. You know, to not have it as any more disruptive than we'd be for them or, or for the board. So anyway, that's it for me.
Thank you. Ms. Boyd?
Yeah, I like the idea of the, the video too, because that's something that we can also send to either the middle schools or the high school that they can use in their daily announcements. So it gets out to all of the, the students, not just people that come to the meeting.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, concerns? So it sounds like if, and if I'm reading this right, we've got a, we're gonna ask for a recommended action to approve, approve the dates and with leaving the times flexible to, to manage through the superintendent's office. Does that sound?
Yeah, that sounds good done. And we put, uh, ten. Yeah, that sounds good done and we put uh tentative time on the, on the document that's in the board packet, the revised, a revised document. And so there's tentative time and then we'll, we'll make some adjustments before we post, make this public. We'll make some adjustments to the next handful of board meetings to reflect five thirty. And then at the bottom, we also have talked about, we've given up some wiggle room about the times may be adjusted. So the, the public will see um tentative times with the, the next few times listed at five thirty and then we'll go from there.
So we've got a recommended action to approve the regular and work study meeting schedule for January twenty twenty one uh to August twenty twenty two. Uh, is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Newmaster, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Chapman, uh, any other discussion?
Well, I want to make one note on August twenty second, twenty twenty two, that is my birthday. So we'll mark that one with a special color.
It's, it's amazing to me that we're already starting about August twenty or twenty twenty two.
Go Leos!
Mr. Chair, I, I think we should uh maybe declare that a holiday, don't you? Not, not meet that day?
It's at least worth them taking us all out for a drink.
There you go. Uh, so we've got a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing or seeing none, this will require a roll call vote. Would the clerk please read the roll?
Ellison, aye. Mullin?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Speloid?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you. Uh, we are now move to E seven, which is the action on the official depositories for the school district. Uh, Mr. Wall?
Sure, thank you, Chairman Mullin. Annually, the board approves the listed bank accounts as official depositories as well as authorizes the signers and those designated to electronically transfer funds. Those accounts, banks and signers are all listed in the board agenda and a recommended action is uh to approve the revised list of uh, or the updated list of official depositories for school district funds and authorize bank accounts and signatures for twenty twenty one.
You've heard the recommended action. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Thompson, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Uh, it sounds like Ms. Speloid got it. Uh, there's a second by Ms. Speloid. Is there any discussion regarding the recommended action? Hearing or seeing none, uh, this will require a roll call vote.
Ellison, aye. Mullin?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Speloid?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
All right. My AirPods went out, so can you guys still hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, we will now move to our next uh E number eight, which is action on the annual resolution authorizing administration to contact for budgeted items. Uh, Dr. Kaszczak?
All right, thank you, Chairman Mullin. Uh, I will just read the recommended action. This is an annual approval item, so I think it will, it'll ring a bell with everybody. So the recommended action is that we move to confirm the school board's understanding that the superintendent and assistant superintendent for finance and operations have been duly authorized to purchase and contract for goods and services within the budget as approved by the board in amounts uh up to one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in restatement of authorization for the same pursuant to Minnesota statute section one twenty-three B, uh, point five two subdivision two.
Uh, you've heard the recommended action. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Ellison, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Newmaster. Is there any discussion regarding the recommended action? Hearing or seeing none, this will require a roll call vote?
Ellison, aye. Mullin?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Speloid?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you very much. We will now move to um item number nine on the agenda, which is the action on the official publication for the school district for twenty twenty one. Uh, Dr. Kaszczak?
So in the past, and it's been many years, our legal notices and minutes have been published in the White Bear Press. Uh, in addition, full minutes are available on the district's website at www.isd624.org. Um, so we, this, the, the recommended action is that we move to approve the White Bear Press as the legal publication for the White Bear Lake area public schools for twenty twenty one. We continue that relationship.
Thank you very much, Dr. Kaszczak. You've heard the recommended action. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Speloid, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Chapman. Uh, is there any discussion regarding the recommended action? Hearing or seeing none, this will require a roll call vote?
Ellison, aye. Mullin?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Speloid?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. Uh, we will now move to item number ten on the agenda, which is the action on the appointment of the compliance officers. Uh, Dr. Kaszczak?
All right, thank you, Chairman Mullin. So uh each year, the administration is to advise the Minnesota Department of Education that we are compliant with federal laws and regulations and state laws and rules prohibiting discrimination. To remove ambiguity and ensure compliance in all of our policies, we ask the school board to take action on um the following appointments. So I, um, actually, the recommended action I will read to you is to move to approve the appointment of Matthew Maugh, Director of Human Resources, as a district human rights officer. Dr. Ellison Gillespie as the Title Nine Coordinator and Lisa Orin, Director of um Student Support Services as a district ADA, five oh four coordinator in conformance with school board policy.
Thank you very much, Dr. Kaszczak. You've heard the recommended action. Is there a motion to approve the recommended action?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Speloid, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Thompson. Any discussion regarding the recommended action? Hearing or seeing none, this will require a roll call vote?
Ellison, aye. Mullin?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson? Arcand?
Aye.
Speloid?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
And motion passes. Thank you all very much. Um, we will now move to number eleven on the agenda, uh, which is the action on the local education agency authorization. Dr. Kaszczak?
Thank you, Chairman Mullin. I will read the recommended action and if there are questions, I'd be happy to answer them. But this again is an annual uh annual action item. So the recommended action is to authorize uh Dr. Wayne Kaszczak as the local education agency or L E A representative for the purpose of reviewing and approving documents required for compliance to federal programs included in the Elementary and Secondary Education Act for twenty twenty one.
Thank you, Dr. Kaszczak. You've heard the recommended action. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
There's a motion by Ms. Thompson, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, second uh by Dr. Newmaster. Uh, any discussion regarding the recommended action? Hearing or seeing none, this will require a roll call vote?
Ellison, aye. Mullin?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Speloid?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you very much. Uh, we will now move to item number twelve on the agenda, which is the action on action on designee of legal counsel. Dr. Kaszczak?
All right, thank you, Chairman Mullin. So again, an annual action item that we uh we do every January. Recommended actions, we approve Knutson, Flynn and Deans, Ratwick, Rozak and Maloney, Rupp, Anderson, Squires and Walzberger and others as needed for twenty twenty one. Um, as our district's legal counsel, the school board approves authorized personnel to contact legal counsel, including school board chair, school board vice chair, superintendent, assistant superintendent for teaching and learning, assistant superintendent for finance and operations, director of human resources, director of student support services, director of community services, director of communications and community relations and director of technology and innovation.
You've heard the recommended action. Is there a motion to approve the recommended action?
So moved.
There's a motion by Dr. Arcand, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Thompson. Uh, is there any discussion regarding the recommended action? Hearing or seeing none, this will require a roll call vote?
Ellison, aye. Mullin?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Speloid?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you all very much. We will now move to uh E thirteen on the agenda, which is the action on the appointment of the representative to the Equity Alliance Minnesota. I will read the recommended action. The school board appoints Jessica Ellison as the White Bear Lake Area Schools Representative to Equity Alliance Minnesota for twenty twenty one. You've heard the recommended action. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
There's a motion by Mr. Chapman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Speloid, is there any discussion regarding the recommended action? Hearing or seeing none, this will require a roll call vote?
Ellison, aye. Mullin?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Speloid?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. We now move to E fourteen, which is the action on the appointment of a representative to the intermediate school district nine sixteen. I will then now read the recommended action. The school board appoints Kim Chapman as the White Bear Lake Area Schools Representative to the intermediate school district nine sixteen, school board for twenty twenty one. Uh, you've heard the recommended action. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Ellison, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Speloid. Uh, is there any discussion regarding the recommended action? Hearing or seeing none, uh, this will require a roll call vote?
Ellison, aye. Mullin?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Speloid?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. We will now move to E fifteen, which is the action on the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year calendar. Dr. Gillespie?
Thank you, Chairman Mullin, members of the board. Um, at our work study last um meeting, I brought to you the twenty-one, twenty-two's um school year calendar and I asked tonight that you approve the recommendation. I extend my gratitude to those members on the calendar committee for their partnership in the creation of this calendar. Additionally, each year we, we pass a um resolution or ask that you pass a resolution in order to allow the school district to conduct activities on Indigenous Peoples' Day and Veterans' Day. Um, that, that resolution is also detailed. So Chairman Mullin, I would, I can read it if you'd like.
Sure, uh, approval of the twenty twenty one, twenty, the recommended action, excuse me, is the approval of the twenty twenty one, twenty-two school year calendar by passing the following resolution. Uh, and the resolution is, uh, do we need, you want to read the resolution or should we?
Yeah, I'll read it.
Okay.
Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District six two four that the attached school year calendar be approved and adopted for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year and that pursuant to Minnesota statute six four five dot four four subdivision five, the School Board of Independent School District six two four has determined that Indigenous Peoples' Day is not a legal holiday and therefore public business, including school board and informational meetings, may be transacted on that day. Additionally, schools will be open on Veterans' Day and in accordance with state statute will have at least one hour of activities in accordance of Veterans' Day.
You've heard the recommended resolution. Is there a motion to approve the recommended action?
So moved.
A motion by Dr. Newmaster, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Speloid, is there any discussion regarding the recommended action? Hearing or seeing none, this will require a roll call vote?
Ellison, aye. Mullin?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Speloid?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
All right, uh, we will now move to E sixteen, which is the um action on the middle school programming. Dr. Gillespie?
Thank you, Chairman Mullin, members of the board. With me tonight are middle school principals Catherine Peterson and Christina Peer. Thank you for hanging in there as we navigated our long board meeting um to provide a brief summary of presentation that we, that they presented along with teacher leaders and Jen Babish, our director of curriculum and instruction. Um, and we ask that you approve the middle school language arts programming, but Ms. Peer?
All right, good, good evening, everyone, and we're ready to go to the next slide. And so just a quick review that uh we've uh been continuing to increase the rigor of our middle school programming and also uh continue to improve our literacy offerings in middle school. And so this year, all sixth and seventh grade students have a full year of language arts where we focus on reading to learn. And then all sixth and seventh grade students also have a half year course in literacy and that's where we focus on writing, specifically composition. On the next slide. All right, and so we are uh recommending that in middle school, we blend our language arts and enrich language arts classes into one course. And the reason is that these courses have become redundant. Uh, both courses have the same range of abilities because we have challenge by choice in middle school. Any student may choose either of those courses. So teachers are already differentiating um according to the needs of individuals and small groups. And then having one course will make it much easier for us to be able to schedule students who have specialized schedules and uh it'll also allow more collaboration among staff. And then I'll just kind of point out that also both courses do teach the same Minnesota state standards.
Both principals are here. Should you have any questions? But we ask that our recommendation is that you approve the modifications to the middle school language arts program.
Thank you all very much. Uh, you've heard the recommended action. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Motion by uh Dr. Arcand, and I'll take a second by Mr. Chapman. Uh, is there any discussion regarding the recommended action? Hearing or seeing none, this will require a roll call vote?
Ellison, aye. Mullin?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Speloid?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you very much. Uh, we will now move to E seventeen, which is the action on the school board policies. Uh, there's several policies here coming for their second reading. Uh, policy four nineteen, tobacco-free environment. Policy four thirty, employees slash visitors ID badges. Uh, policy five seventeen, student recruiting. Policy five eighteen, D N R, D N I orders. And policy six oh seven, or organization of grade levels. Uh, these are coming for their second. Is there, we'll do them in one swoop. Is there a motion to approve all those policies?
Um, I would, I believe that we took the top policy off of tonight's. It must have got missed in this part, portion, but I believe that they said they asked for more time on the policy four nineteen, if I'm correct. Otherwise, I'll make a motion once that's corrected.
Four nineteen should be brought back because we're having our American Indian Parent Advisory Council.
Okay, so there is a correction on the agenda. Uh, you've heard the correction. Is there a motion to approve the policies previously read um with the correction? Uh, is there a motion to approve those?
So moved.
There's a motion by Ms. Thompson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Speloid. Uh, any discussion regarding those policies? Hearing or seeing none, this will require a roll call vote?
Ellison, aye. Mullin?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Speloid?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Uh, and those pass, uh, the motion passes. Thank you. Uh, we will move to our final agenda item for the evening, which is E eighteen, action on the approval of the property purchase agreement. Dr. Kaszczak?
All right, thank you, Chairman Mullin, members of the board. Um, before you is a recommended action item, uh, to approve the purchase of another property that borders, uh, or that's on the block of North Compton and, um, Central Middle School. Consist, consistent with our approach the last few months, um, this property, um, is very helpful. Um, it's helpful that we acquire this for, for site development. So I'll read the recommended action. We move to approve the purchase agreement for the property described as EID number 143022120015, located in the city of White Bear Lake, County of Ramsey, State of Minnesota. The board authorizes the superintendent, the assistant superintendent for finance and operations to sign all documents as necessary to acquire the property.
You've heard the recommended action. Is there a motion to, uh, approve the recommended action?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Chapman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Blyd, is there any discussion regarding the recommended action? Hearing or seeing none, this will require a roll call vote.
Ellison, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Blyd?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
All right, and the motion passes. Thank you all very much. Uh, it is now time for our meeting, uh, for board forum. Uh, is there anything anybody would like to add for board forum? Ms. Ellison?
Just really quickly, I wanted to give a shout out to the Equity Action Plan team that's been meeting, um, last several Fridays. Uh, Ms. Thompson also serves on that committee with me along with several people from the district, students and the community. And I want to commend Dr. Davis and Equity Alliance Minnesota for their excellent work. It's been good work, good work. So I'm excited for that and looking forward to how that helps us move forward.
Thank you, Ms. Ellison. Is there any other comments under board forum? I just, uh, you know, for me, I want to take a moment just to thank you all for your work. This has been a very, you know, last year was a very trying year and I know there was a lot going on, not only inside of our, our family units, but, uh, just with the school board in, as a whole. And I want to thank you all for your work there. Um, it's, it's been a pleasure serving with all of you and I really appreciate the time and the efforts and everything you do for, for our students in the school district. So I just wanted to say thank you all very much. Uh, is there anything else on it for board forum? With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Chair Mullen, I move for an adjournment.
I will second that motion and I would say we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Way to hold on all night, Dr. Arcand. I think you look like you need to go close your eyes for a while.
I'm heading to bed right now.
Yes, thank you for being a trooper.
Bye.